Yeah.
Hearing is hereby closed. So let's go on to public, uh, public comments.
Do I stand here or do you?
No ma'am.
I'm T D Joyce, I live in the area of Towne James Island. I'm an avid tennis player, um, but there are no facilities for tennis clubs to me in our Towne James Island. We have Maybend Tennis Center, which is owned by the city of Charleston. The city of Charleston also has a center of farm field, the Charleston Tennis Center, and the Palm Beach Ferry, the Palm Beach Island. As far as I know, they have scattered courts in, um, the Towne James Island, but we have a tennis center. And tennis, as well as pickleball, is really growing this area. And I would like to see that we spend some of our money for recreation, for outdoor recreation in this particular area. Um, as member of Maybend, I have to pay non-resident fees, um, because I'm not a resident of the city of Charleston. Um, I would like for that to change for the city, for the Towne James Island. We have some place that we can go. Maybend is overused. You circle like a vulture trying to get a court there in the evenings. Um, the only way to immediately make this a little bit better situation is if there are, um, five play courts at the tennis center that are not used in the evenings, that do not have lights. And that's a possibility. Maybe work with the city of Charleston to perhaps help fund light there so that we can use light. But in general, I would like to see more outdoor recreation facilities, and particularly the area of tennis and pickleball.
Thank you very much. Alright, so, uh, there's no one else signing up to speak? And so, uh, we will now go to consent agenda. Is there a minute? Some group of second? I can, so, uh, Councilor Northman moved and Councilor Mellet second. Would be a minute, please, Paul.
Councilor Mavolos?
Yes.
Councilor Nunez-Guerra?
Yes.
Councilor Mavolos?
Yes.
Councilor Mavolos?
Yes.
Mavolos?
Yes. Okay, so now we'll go to information, uh, reports. We'll start with the mayor's report. So, uh, we continue to receive applications to county administration position. The committee reviewed fourteen applications, reviewed four candidates. The committee anticipated making recognition in county councils soon. Um, I shared with county council, um, rating of staff, uh, fifty minutes. Uh, town's first effort to paint bids with separate bank inspections not successful. A new request proposal was made and received this. They didn't receive that information. That's on agenda. We see information about those bids, uh, last few days. Um, county council party paid $100,000 to pay fees at several ethics commissions for lobbying reports that are not filed on time. The town received notice of legal action by T-Bo, LCC, C-CA, or each other. The town has no legal right for patrons of the J. John Carson Postal Center to use the camp, center parking lot. And, uh, lastly, the town attorneys in East Allo Ray, who the town reflected in race for the charter clients. Some questions?
Yeah, so I have a question about the lobbyists. Was this our group lobbyists? Uh, and was it the case that they had to file a report, or was it the town that filed?
The town has to, is required to file three reports per year. And there were, we needed to file reports last fall immediately. And then, but most of them were just in reference to reports for the police officers. But we were, for what the town.
Okay, the town that filed, alright. Am I wrong, correct, to do that?
Yes.
I won't.
Well, we thought about it last. I've learned my lesson. It's, uh, the three reports each.
Alright, uh, this part is on the board about the territorial adjustment request by T-Bo, uh, soon. Um, may we have a discussion of that in the executive session? Or is that, because I have a question about it. I just don't know whether to ask it in open session.
So, you know, of course, we had the executive session this evening, whatever matter, but.
Okay.
And what we need to add to it.
Alright, okay, I just wasn't sure where.
So, so we should refer to what we want to say.
Okay.
Alright, uh, yeah. Alright, so let's go now to the, uh, so the budget narrative, which is on full page. I'm not going to read it, uh, here. But, you know, roughly, the, uh, we have a draft budget, um, that I'm presenting to council. And it's pretty much final. There may be some more changes before it comes before us next month, for those who are in the process. But the total general expenditure was approximately four million, which is the same as last year. The capital projects is forecast to increase by a million to three point five million. And that's, uh, primarily maybe funded by the American SD fund. Um, in the past, we funded our capital projects by moving money out of our income fund accounts, our cap sales. Um, and this budget proposes that we do very little, much less than we did last year instead of using American SD funds. Funds in these capital projects. And also, we're not, I'm not proposing to use a storm law. And those monies will be available for future fiscal revenues. Um, there's a seven point four increase, possibly an increase for town staff, I can say for last year's budget. And also, we're getting from the town thirty two percent increase in possible island insurance control deputies. And what request the council consider, uh, adding another full-time deputy? Because it increases our rates substantially cheaper on an ongoing annual basis to have a dedicated deputy. And so, we're proposing to order that, uh, you know, before we actually pay the action, it's supposed by. The military is unchanged, but the loss credit to keep. It says that our town property owners don't pay any tax to the town. The post-cost year PSD equals one point two million. So that would provide a tax credit against the J. John Disney property taxes, about two hundred dollars. Um, there's an increase in the hospitality fund fund expenditures, mostly that reflects operating on a year-round basis, but also, I'm proposing to add a part-time employee, so it's increased hours, which is open. Um, the hospitality tax revenues are projected to be substantially. And, um, current fund will continue to operate surplus, though it is small order impacts. Capital spending for hospitality tax about eight thousand, and the biggest part of that is for the sidewalk along the water road. But we admitted to its five years, the final construction phase, and we like to pay our share of property taxes to the community. Um, based on that budget workshop we had, um, earlier in the month, there's a proposed increase of fifty five thousand for public works. To be used for road, shoulder work, four hundred twenty five thousand dollars for the round power lines. An increase in twenty thousand for police services that might be used for organization. And twenty five thousand for bus shelters, for benches that cost a pound. Um, I'm not going to review before, um, the even discussion, both across the global, to have an artful class of workshop. And that's included in the budget, though, um, action was forward, it required console action. So, any questions about that?
So, I just want to say that I really do appreciate that, and your great version, uh, I think is very helpful.
Alright, um, can you note, note up on that?
If he can hear, I sent him, I just redid the webinar and started over, and I got my panelist link. And I sent him one to his personal and his Gmail, and I forwarded it to him as well. I don't know what else to do, I'm sorry.
Um, no, I, I got it.
Finance report?
Is that it? Yeah, he said he got it.
I'm on the Zoom meeting right now. I can see you guys, but I can't turn my video on.
Alright, so, um, let's go to the finance report.
Um, can we break that piece of contract? In the building section, we have, um, our first statement to the council committee for the current fact that is frozen and is freezing for use for the time too. Other capital project, um, and two different costs, uh, fifty five thousand dollars for White House. Uh, that's a fifty fifty match, both in infrastructure and. And the hospitality tax, which one was that we're speaking with? One of my jobs are recent falling action. I already had a check for March for four thousand dollars, uh, reverse continued from. And, um, under the brand chart, forty thousand dollars was to, uh, fire. Fire from.
Any other questions for, uh, Aaron?
Yeah, I, I have just a quick question, I don't say. Um, uh, um, the adjustment under hospitality tax, over our outside home, it's seven hundred fifty thousand dollars up there?
Are you telling me?
Yeah, there's like a outside column.
I, I, yeah, I don't.
I was trying to.
I, I, I think that, uh, just in a, if I could that one.
Right here, just, uh.
Yeah, it's out, it's out, that's the form.
Outside of the box.
Yeah, it's just back there.
I just was wondering what that.
Yeah, I think it's in there.
Okay, sorry.
That's alright.
Any other questions? Here now, thank you so much, Aaron. Um, public works report.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, in February, there were three requests for service, number of grand related staff on call requests. Staff held monthly meeting, stormwater managers. Staff has been monitoring White House over wear, drainage sidewalk project, which is still waiting for regular media deadlines. Staff trained the insurance free survey program. They are not right now training, but they have been doing a really good job. Staff managed to do the town emergency plan and participated in the drainage meeting. Staff participated in the Rosa meeting, the Highland Avenue project, and we had a kickoff meeting for the twill run, uh, drainage project. We participated in the county water passage meeting, and we met with contractors to discuss, uh, the document about student card. Staff saw demonstration of secret system of work local management and participated in the J. John Task Force meeting. Uh, and was, uh, was selected to chair the technical, so. Public Works Director is this year's president-elect of the local branch of South Carolina chapter of the American Public Works Association, and staff number Connor Stikney, started as our construction minions worker two. Staff knew no consignments, educated names, a couple of their regularly, we knew staff being trained.
That's fine. Thank you. Any, um, questions for?
Any word from, uh, Popcom system?
Uh, last I heard, uh, he's busy all the time. He hasn't been doing a lot of things, and, uh, he hardly has a chance to catch his breath, so.
Well, that's true. Well, I had to get a bit of his name in there saying, oh, that's right, that's better, but, but done. Alright, uh, next we, we have a vote enforcement case, there's four of those. So that's March. We have J. John Carson Postal Hall monthly report, and, um, so I have the big issue with our postal centers, we're going to be sure of the part show. April. Any, uh, questions?
Yeah, I've just got to say, yeah, I'm, I'm just thrilled with us involving that, everything that's going on there. And it's just a wonderful resource for the.
Alright, um, next, I'm sure, for, for.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, with that name correct, to here tonight, I hope everybody knows that fortunately, mother is passing away. So we're dealing with that, so we should. And finally, with this, it's been a busy month for us so far. Starting out, Deputy Scruggs was controlling an area of Bragada and neighbors Robyn, he can press, uh, on repeat, and scraping the intersection. The words get it, don't, and it's handle time. Scraping it. I don't know how much it took at the time, but they take part of the damage, and it was awarded. We had a drug weapons violation at Holly Road, Fort Johnson. Um, it's actually Deputy Scruggs, the driver of this traffic stop on Easomaxima for illegal windows and violation. After making contact with the driver, uh, strong motor, remember, long overs, smoking the vehicle, subjects were asked to begin. Uh, the driver initially refused, initially referred to, uh, on the vehicle. And some marijuana was located in the vehicle, um, some scales, baggies, and Deputy Scruggs did a C S two fire, which in the vehicle, uh, later found to be using a shot fired by the city of Charleston, we had. Deputy's recovered a stolen license plate from the police department, so it's reported to Sonora North Hall City, ninety percent, more west, it was turned into exit maybe. We had a license needed at twelve forty Ocean Avenue Road, a chainsaw was taken by a suspect at the time, it is still a open case. Now, auto rated eleven oh six Grand Hill Road, a Dell laptop that belongs to, uh, Belling was stolen. That was handed into the NCIS system, which is generally the victim, and it is zero numbers. That's also still an open case. On the third, uh, myself and Deputy Cox were at the park lot, and three young children came up with some bites, reported an accident that occurred on campus, in a lemon tree. And as they were put into us, there was dispatch, there was a hit and run, involving a blackmail and red light dirt bike. That was reported earlier, going through people's yards that were trying to locate. He struck the vehicle and caused damage, and then fled soon. When I got out the victim, she basically fled down lemon tree, so I could pull down there, and I located him at eleven thirty two Jeffrey. He fled from me on the dirt bike, and in small pursuit with two, however, once he went off, I was either recently further. Uh, he made a mistake of looking directly at me, and he's well known to us because he's a game member, so I went out for him. First, I stopped the blue lights, and we didn't see any actual property damage. And just the other day, Deputy Cox, myself, and our attorney, located him in the vicinity. We got arson investigation that still active from eleven thirty Williams Road, uh, the current resident was certification papers, we get the crime suspect for that arson. Uh, that investigation is still open and ongoing at this time. There are another drug weapons violation, uh, burglar leaning criminal, that was also the director of Stop Moving East on Altima. For moving violation, we contact, uh, the suspects. And a rear seat passenger fled on foot, and stopped, was detained after resisting arrest and moving towards his wife. A metal house race box containing ecstasy was found on him, and the driver, they're going to eat another bag of ecstasy when he was transported to the hospital. The best vehicle in the area, the driver's seat was bagged with jars of marijuana. Inside the glove box was a sleeping western, then a windshield lamp holder. The driver claimed ownership of the vehicle was fully computer, and providing proof of ownership. The other passengers in the vehicle, uh, were released, so it's, that was in a hot girl, uh, deputy worker that. It was from White House compensation, a picture trust vehicles from thirteen ten Comeridge Avenue. The victims stated he hired a gentleman to work on his wife, who had a Land Cruiser, and a Harley Davidson. At the time, in a given, another few months, the victim hadn't heard anything for several months, and then received a citation from Tennessee for the S U B R in the apartment by. So subsequently, the gentleman took the vehicle and departed back. So that investigation was done, and reports are off of that individual's arrest. We recovered a stolen vehicle on Carverview Road and James Island Drive. It was a twenty seventeen Toyota four runner, which was reported as stolen, could probably reach, and was stopped for driving about two blocks. The driver of that vehicle fled, but was captured in charge of possession of small vehicle, possession of methamphetamine. We had a vandalism occurred six days ago, Carverview Road, a car was struck by a window, an object of image. It wasn't there, or was the gentleman in the area of, and he's going to have to find whoever, what happened to the damage. Alright, we got a burglary affair at the Stevie Oil Change on Holly, uh, where over nine hundred dollars was taken from cash register. The investigation saw moving, there was surveillance footage, however, the suspect was wearing a mask and hoodie and gloves. Uh, a couple days after that, we got a report of another burglary progress, and that, which I responded to, with the subject as gone. I was able to positively identify, but he never had any entry into the business, and this is sort of a kind of prosecution for that. Deputy's recovered another stolen vehicle, that's white, connecting that Dodge Charger, stolen, we're at the county sheriff's office. That were recovered in sixth grade, following route. More stolen, a license needed here on Fort Johnson, uh, victims stated that their Apple iPhone was in the part of the soul. Actually, a vehicle collision, should've been, and that was shown in a different area of town, Keywood. That investigation is still open. There's another license needed attention, York County Drive, victims stated that the thirty two inch birthday TV was taken Washington's way. She believes that it was her roommates that committed the license, however, they are unable to prove at this time. Walgreens had a chocolate toothbrush, or a blackhound, or anything, which is a basket, and a store provided with my trash bin. And fled on a bicycle, who's unidentically located, although there is surveillance footage, submitted to evidence, Deputy Harvey's assumption that I can be a suspect. There's another license needed process for Fort Johnson, around three hundred dollars worth of fiber was stolen from the backyard. So there's no surveillance footage, there are no suspects at this time. Friday reported a vandalism. Uh, it's like a follow old, uh, one of the rest, she's had a ear broken, foot well over, put in the toilet, and the light all kicked out. At this time. There's been a lot of suspicious activity between seven eleven and seven twenty, the riding road. Uh, twenty two barrels had contained hydrochloric acid, and sodium hydrochloride were located in that area. It was upon zero, mostly empty, and prior to that, there was being placed, there were suspicious individuals in close to the area. Uh, stolen license plate was recovered from the property, calling Avenue, in House of Four Ranger, and NCIS, it was later located. And United NCIS, Deputy Jones located that. The seven star liquor reported, uh, numerous bills, or contract courtesy bills. Of twenty dollars bills and fifty dollars bills, over the course of three weeks, one of the bills has a top of the line written on it. Right, so it's a little bit of a.
That's all, the ministers? Well, thank you. Uh, can you put your questions? That's a lot of time.
Indeed it is, sir. It's been a busy month for us.
Um, for this person, well, let's hope that, uh, the list of crimes is shorter, but if it stays that long, it's probably quite a problem with, uh, the test.
But.
I appreciate it. Good, good, all the work. Alright, uh, but there's no further questions. Uh, let's go on to requests from the staff, first to the library agent, and two more stuff on the road.
Yes, and in fact, I believe you see a picture of this, and, um, the picture doesn't really do it justice. The COVID therapy is, is clearly visible, it's not covered here. Um, the drivers have the pass. Um, so, this is next to another one that was an accident, we all have approved. Um, I've got the estimate, which is quite, for, for you, uh.
Any questions? Is there a motion, group?
Second.
Second. The council, Nunez-Guerra, made a motion. No, consecutive. Not any discussion? Any questions?
Sorry, you didn't do both at the same time?
That's what council.
Yeah. That could be more economical, if you do it at the same time.
Well, it's easier to do this, uh, on this concrete, on this asphalt, um, it's just a matter of scheduling. We'd be easier if they were on the island, same island.
Yeah.
Looks like you're all good. I'm reading asphalt.
Yeah.
It always been, yeah, we're going back with all asphalt.
Okay, uh, can you please call?
Councilor Mavolos?
Yes.
Councilor Nunez-Guerra?
Yes.
Councilor Mavolos?
Yes.
Councilor Mavolos?
Yes.
Mavolos?
Yes. Alright, next we go to the contractor bids for the second, uh, system inspection.
Yeah, uh, we had to, um, there's nice second tag, I don't know, it's like solutions, we had to check her references, and they're high reputable firms. Um, the prices are in line with industry standards, and I recommend, go ahead.
Okay, is there a motion, group? Some group, the second? Second, any discussion?
Which, which, both of these?
There's plenty of them.
Okay.
Any further questions, discussion? Uh, Councilor Mavolos?
Yes.
Councilor Nunez-Guerra?
Yes.
Councilor Mavolos?
Yes.
Councilor Mavolos?
Yes.
Mavolos?
Yes, that passes. So, uh, next we go to major reports.
Well, I'm ready.
Um, also, that'll be a, uh, communication.
Yes, we took on Friday, uh, litter pickup last weekend. We had thirty six volunteers pick up, bring bags of litter off our island roadways. We had some great participation from Hurricane Boxing, uh, James Island Charter High School Junior, Air Force, R O T C. And of course, the exchange class. Um, our next litter pickup is going to be another about the highway event, and that's going to be April ninth. That's April ninth.
Alright, any questions? Thank you. I know a report from Children's Committee, I would say, maybe.
Uh, first of all, I've got a nominee, uh, for a jury, a member of the rest, and this is Stephen, Sir, Jared, coming in the past two meetings. And even if not, and we're, um, offer a lot of input, and, um, very good, good testimony. So I'll go and ask him to, like, we know where it's at, and I'll make, and see. Um, Steve, Jared, you're ready?
So second, second, on favor say aye?
Aye.
Both? Okay, uh, this is the committee, uh, this is the council, Matt, and work on plans for the first shot event, uh, this award that, Fort Johnson. Is scheduled for Sunday, April tenth, from one o'clock T M to three o'clock P M. So the speakers should be good at it, so encourage everyone to, ah. Any questions? For Fort Johnson. Um, we think, uh, Polly Road, the, um, new chair person is, um, county councilwoman, Jenny Honeycutt, and the vice chairman woman, or vice chairwoman, is, uh, state representative, Spencer. And the vice chairman woman, or vice chairman is state representative Spencer. So that would be my business that. Range committee. Um, I have one. There's this development committee, council.
No report, thank you.
Should we advise your committee?
We do not meet in March for our next meeting, this is for April twelve.
We have the James Island governmental council. And I'm afraid I, the meeting is scheduled for April. You have any idea?
Twenty-seven.
April twenty-seven. So Wednesday, it's a Wednesday. April twenty-seven. Your town hall at seven o'clock. All right. Next, affirmations and resolutions. So our first is American Red Cross. All right, so please, yeah. And thank you so much. In times of crisis, people in James Island come together here for another expanded experience. Part of the foundation is exemplified by American Red Cross volunteers and donors. In eighteen eighty-one, Burton founded the American Red Cross, turning steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. They will, one hundred forty years later, to honor kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in James Island, continuing to carry out letters last day's legacy. They join millions of people across the United States, bond you with blood, donate financially, or learn vital life preserving skills through the Red Cross. In James Island, contributions to local Red Cross volunteers, the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, whether it is providing emergency shelter, food, and proper payments devastated by local disasters, by wildfires, tornadoes, hurricanes, conveying essential blood for accident burn victims, from surgery or retransplant patients, and those receiving treatment from Indian camp several simple seven C's. Supporting service members and veterans along with families and caregivers through the unique challenges of working life, helping to save the lives of others with first aid CPR and host skills for delivering international aid to communities. Humanitarian aid. In the Low Country, local families had relied on Red Cross South Carolina volunteers for comfort and hope while coping with the pandemic from fires, tornadoes, floods, and storms. Last year, over five hundred fifty active volunteers served in local communities deployed to local disasters to respond for the person and virtually to national disasters like hurricanes and wildfires. Volunteers also helped more than one thousand one hundred thirty-eight people affected by over three hundred sixty home fires in Low Country by addressing their urgent needs like food, lodging, and public support. The Red Cross South Carolina volunteers have supported local families never wasted. Last year in South Carolina, the Red Cross provided nearly thirteen thousand six hundred case services to U S service members, veterans, and public families. Sucking more than eighty thousand units of life saving blood and training more than eight thousand eight hundred people in life saving skills by first aid and CPR. Their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. We dedicate this month of March to all those tending to advance the noble legacy of American Red Cross founder, Carter Barton, lived by her words. You must never think of anyone except for me and how to me. We ask others to join in this mission to give back in our community. Therefore, I am your worst members of council, the town of James Island, by virtue of the authority vested in me and by laws of James Island and South Carolina, we invite you to march two thousand twenty-two as Red Cross won and for all citizens of James Island to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Does this motion favor? Some group, all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good.
Thank you so much. Actually, we have a motion in our population draft, sending it in. Same rules. And she was born in Prong in nineteen thirty-two. But she has a family connection to James Island. And she is an artist. And this is recognized for for her birthday. So it's a motion to approve. Some group is a second, second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So say your strong, do all your contributions. Next, we go to Deputy of the Year. Deputy Duckbucker, do you want to? Brockler. So. Whereas Deputy Brockner has been nominated vice peers for the James Island Sheriff's Patrol Deputy of the Year. And whereas Deputy Brockner has been working for the Sheriff's Patrol since two thousand nineteen. And whereas Deputy Brockner statistic continued to grant above and beyond. And we've heard several of his activities and things done in the last month. Whereas Deputy Brockner worked five hundred thirty hours, topped four hundred one vehicles, wrote sixty-nine tickets, and wrote two hundred seventy-nine warnings, conducted twenty-one field interviews, and made twenty-nine arrests. Therefore, let it be resolved that the town of James Island recognizes outstanding service commitment and dedication. Deputy Brockner on the S A Island Sheriff's Patrol Deputy of the Year two thousand twenty-one. Well, we need to make our motion, it's a motion in favor. So the session, all favors say aye.
Aye.
So now there is, we give a check for our people. And thank you, we appreciate all you did do, all of our. All right, now we have our first review of our ordinance to amend our landing. ordinance to remove beekeeping as a category for moving all restrictions on beekeeping in James Island. Much thank. Some of the second from George. Any discussion? Well, I oppose this motion because I believe that while keeping bees is very important. I do think reasonable limits are important to beekeeping. With the number of bee hives on a property, the distance from the property lines, and sound best practices are things that should be required in the panel. In previous meetings, when this was discussed, there were claims that this was already regulated on the state level. That is in fact not true. There are no state requirements for keeping bees away from property lines. The assumption is that beekeeping will be done in rural areas, farms, from other properties, not residential areas, at least the state level, which is no language. We also heard that the town had a regulation that county rules would apply. As against, not correct that county regulations of this sort of thing would be in your zone. Though in county zones does not apply in municipalities, only partially applies. So I cannot support, but I consider quite radical change. When I first became mayor, beekeeping was illegal. Not at all. We modified that and allowed beekeeping as a special exception. And that would require people wanting to keep bees, would appear to the VCA and would give their neighbors an opportunity to, if their ability was appropriate, to have bees and the known or of bee hives and the distance with property lines to be required as conditions. I think that that's the status quo, that's the usual approach. And certainly taking the extreme case of just removing all restrictions and allowing people to keep as many bee hives as they might wish and putting bee hives right next to, say, playground equipment. It's just not safe for reasons. So I would kind of approve of that. Any further discussion?
Sure.
Here are none.
Can y'all, can y'all not, you can't hear me, I guess.
I heard you say, do you ask me something to say? Yes, sir.
I am in favor of this. Do y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. I think we debated this ad nauseam before, so I won't belabor the point. But to me, it sounded like these rules on beekeeping were solving a problem that doesn't exist. And I like the idea of a small town government and council that doesn't make rules for every possible scenario that could ever come up. So I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
All right, so any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to address the idea about the number of hives. These are sort of a self-regulating colony. You have to have a lot of flowers to keep a hive in pretty good shape. And these are going to, you're not going to have somebody put fifty ghihs on the end of that yard and have it to use to get a little spot. You're lucky if you get through, right? Within the residential area, it doesn't have a lot of flowers. So therefore, I think it's almost a self-regulating kind of operation in homes. And what maybe not appreciate the original iteration of this, like any course before, was the fact that the local homeowner slash prevent potential beekeeper would have to have permission from their neighbors. And to me, that didn't seem right. So that's one of the major of just removing all restrictions on beekeeping rather than having additional rules applied to it.
Any further discussion? Here are none, she's probably.
Councilman Vogel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manon.
Yes.
Councilman Vogel.
Yes.
Muller next?
Yes.
No. All right, so next we go to executive session. Is there a motion for the executive session? I'm going to go to the second session to give legal advice regarding towns paths and tax credit policies. And also going to the second session for legal advice regarding parking rights and James Island Police Centers, etc. Some discussion? Here are none, she's probably.
Councilman Vogel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manon.
Yes.
Councilman Vogel.
Yes.
Councilman Muller.
Yes.
Yes. All right, so there we go to the public for the second session.